Okay, is there any additions or corrections to the minutes of the previous meeting?
Mr. Mayor, I have a change correction, I guess, in the. Under the vacation of the Street for the Clarion, states we moved to vacate one lady. My motion is moving to move forward with considerations and planning or future motions of the vacation. So it's kind of more of a word.
Clarification, okay. Anything else? Not the minutes stand approved as amended. Okay. City Manager, do you want?
Yeah, first of all, Mayor, we were contacted by Kim Interle, Finney County Commission on Tourism, who had requested to speak at public comment, and she was, she is involved in the, or listening in on the interviews for the senior housing, so she's coming to a future meeting if she is interested in doing so. I'd also like to make the commission aware and public as well, we've got an addition to the, an additional petition memorial or remontance, it's, so we'll call that 6E, it's a bench item, and a letter from Casco Homes, and they'll be present to present their petition to the commission.
Okay. At this time, anyone that's here, that's on the agenda, can make public comment up to five minutes, just come up to the mic, state your name, and tell us anything you want to tell us. Okay.
Good afternoon. My name is Ally Medina from Finney County Economic Development Corporation. I would like to address the commission on behalf of Finney County Economic Development Corporation and Downtown Vision. Over the past several months, there have been several instances of businesses starting up or moving to new locations in Finney County, only to find that the property that they have selected is not properly zoned for the business activities that they engage in. In the past, the city of Garden City has discussed the idea of creating a business license that would be administered by the Community Development Department. With the very limited availability of commercial real estate inventory, potential businesses are more prone to take any available property without first ensuring that it is properly zoned for them. We feel that there could be great benefit to considering the idea of creating a business license again. Not only would new and relocating businesses benefit by determining they have selected a properly zoned building before they make a financial commitment to a particular building, our existing businesses who are located in properly zoned areas could be confident that the purpose of their district will be preserved. This licensing procedure would also give us the opportunity to provide consistent information to all new businesses regarding services that are available to them in the community. We would expect that any fee for this license would be kept at a minimum, so as not to serve as a detriment to new businesses. We understand that there are many issues to consider should you choose to move forward with the licensing procedure, but we feel that the idea does have merit, and planned and executed properly would be a benefit to all businesses in Garden City. Thank you.
Thank you. We will, we've discussed that before, so it'll be brought up again.
Should we ask that they put on the agenda, an agenda in the future?
I think that'd be good. What would that probably be, what, the 15th?
No. No, I think there's been a.
Did some research on it.
Right. We'll continue to work with these groups. Ideally, if it's, if it's the business community that's advocating for the license, or representatives of agencies that represent the business community, that these two groups, and perhaps in addition with the chamber, would help lead that discussion and develop at a grassroots level something that the business community itself would like to see in place to protect its own interests. Rather than a top-down guess at, hey, will this work, and then, you know, and then it ends up sort of like the business version of the landlord issue, and where the top-down proposal is always going to have something wrong with it. So we'll work with these groups and talk it, talk it a little bit more detail, but yeah, it's a bold step, so I appreciate you coming and sharing that with us.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Okay. Sunday.
Spirit of Plains Furniture Mart requests governing body consideration to approve a waiver to the sign and temporary structure requirements from April 23 through May 5.
Fan sale, same one they had.
Make a motion to approve the waiver for the sign and temporary structural requirements for those dates.
Second. It's been moved and seconded that we approve. Horror of Furniture Mart's request, waiver of sign temporary structure requirements from April 23, 2014, to May 5. Any further discussion? All those in favor of that motion signify the same eye.
Aye.
opposed, motion carried.
Item 6B, Bible Christian Church requests governing body consideration and approval for a waiver of the sign fee to promote the day of service on Saturday, April 12. The banner would be placed north of the right-of-way at the Family Life Center at 1501 East Mary Street from Wednesday, April 2 through the 7.
Excuse me, I got information that it's actually supposed to be the 14th. They added air in their letter on the request, so it's actually April 14 instead of April 7, so a week later.
But the banner's only going to be up from the 2nd through the 7th?
No, they marked it up through the 14th. Yeah, because the day is, the event is the 12th, and then they would take it down Monday.
Okay.
That doesn't make sense.
That doesn't make sense at all.
Yeah. Why would you leave it up after the, after the event?
The letter requests the day of service, and granted, April 14 is the correct day of service, but they're asking that the banner be staked in place on Wednesday, April 2, and taken down on April 7. So is the request for the sign that's up from the 2nd through the 7th, or is the request to have the sign from the 2nd to the 12th, or the 2nd to the 14th?
Their request is what, what they told me was to keep the sign up from the 2nd through the 14th.
They don't want to take it down till?
After.
Okay.
Okay. Let me have ten more motions.
I'll make a motion to be considered, approve the waiver and sign fee for the services conducted from April 2 through the 14th of April on Mary Street for the Bible Christian Church.
I'll second. It's been moved and seconded that we approve the waiver of the sign fee for Bible Christian Church for from April 2 to 14th. Any further discussion? All those in favor of that motion signify the same eye. Opposed, motion carried.
Item 6C, governing body and the employees of the, and citizens of Garden City wish to take this opportunity to recognize and celebrate Zoo Director Kathy Sexton for 30 years of service on the occasion of her retirement and her service to this community. In addition, the governing body is requested to allow the mayor to proclaim April 1, 2014 as Kathy Sexton Day.
She isn't here, she was there.
That's right, she's gone, isn't she? We did have a nice event, I think all of you, or many of you were in attendance on Friday. It was a really nice opportunity to thank Kathy for her service. We have dedicated the education wing at the Finney Center for Conservation Education in her name, so that's a neat honor. Hopefully this proclamation passes, because the mayor already gave it to her on Friday. If not, we did ask that she give it back, so.
I make a motion to be approved of the proclamation.
One second. Yeah, it's been moved and seconded that we approve the proclamation for Kathy Sexton to make April 1 Kathy Sexton Day. Any further discussion? All those in favor signify the same eye. Opposed, motion carried.
Spirit of Plains Casa and Kansas Children's Service League requests governing body consideration and approval to allow the mayor to proclaim the month of April 2014 as Child Abuse Prevention Month.
I make a motion to approve the proclamation.
I'll second.
It's been moved and seconded that we approve the proclamation for Child Abuse Prevention Month, April, beginning April. Any further discussion? All those in favor signify the same eye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried.
And item 6E is the one we've added to the.
There, there.
Oh, yeah, come on up, you want to talk about your event, and then we can have the mayor read the proclamation.
I'd love to miss this opportunity.
Absolutely. I'm Lori Jacobs, I'm the Executive Director at Spirit of the Plains Casa, and this is.
Yeah, I'm Tammy Murillo, I'm the Child and Family Service Supervisor at KCSL Head Start, Early Head Start.
We just wanted to take the opportunity to thank the commission for noticing about child abuse awareness. We're trying to do some prevention efforts, so thank you so much for allowing this proclamation. And we also wanted to mention that Friday this week is Wear Blue Day in honor of child abuse prevention as well, so please, everybody, wear blue.
This afternoon, we'll be putting Pinwells at Commerce Bank again this year with our logo of child abuse intervention.
Okay, I'd like to read this proclamation. It says, whereas children are the key to the state's future success, prosperity, trust care, and quality of life, and while children are most, are our most valuable resource, they are always our most vulnerable. Whereas children have a right to be safe and to be provided an opportunity to thrive, learn, and grow, and whereas child abuse and neglect can be prevented by supporting and strengthening Kansas families, thus preventing the far-reaching efforts of mal treatment, providing the opportunity for children to develop healthy, trusting family bonds, and consequently building foundations of communities, and whereas we must come together as partners so that the voices of our children are heard by all, and we are as a community extending a helping hand to children and families in need, and whereas by providing safe, stable, and nourishing relationships for our children free of violence, abuse, and neglect, we can ensure that Kansas children will grow to their full potential as the next generation of leaders, helping to secure the future of this state and nation. Now therefore, I Dan Frank, as the Mayor of the City of Garden City, Kansas, do hereby proclaim April 2014 as Child Abuse Prevention Month in Garden City, and call upon all citizens, community agencies, and religious organizations, medical facilities, businesses, to increase the participation in our effort to prevent child abuse, thereby strengthening the communities in which we live, sign and seal this first day of April 2014, Dan Frank as the Mayor. Okay. Appreciate it. You bet.
Thank you. Now we're ready for item 6E, which is the item that was added to the bench.
Okay, I think I'll step down for this and turn it over to our Vice Mayor.
Okay. Do we have a?
The mayor commissioner's there, I was just waiting for the mayor to introduce himself.
Oh, sure. He's out of the room now.
The request is from Casco Homes, and John is present. He's requesting a waiver of Article 9.03 of the IDC code, and has a letter indicating such. John, you can come on up and make, make your request, it's really right there anyways, but I guess you can say the words, describe your project, maybe would be helpful, and then if the commission has any other questions, we can be available to answer those.
Okay. This is a project that we started over on College and Lover's Lane. We got, we received a building permit to start, and there must have been some miscommunications between us and the city deal. We were issued a building permit and stuff like that, and then when Dave gave his resignation and left, it came to light that these should be sprinklers. Now, in the past, where we've always done that in the past, is we've always did firewalls in between every two units to get them to work as duplexes, and that is something that has gone since as long as I've been building. Well, you know, the city is now, they're not wanting to do that at this point, they're, I mean, I'm hoping you guys will reconsider that, that at a future date, but what's happened now is we're on a stop deal, and I've got to sign contract, you know, between me and my, you know, deal, and I, I'm forced with, you know, I've got to comply with this contract. And that's about $40,000 to put sprinklers in this. And with the things I have accepted in the new deals, which is they're going to require a firewall now in between each unit, that was not such a burden on me that I couldn't go ahead and complete the project. But the fire deal and putting the sprinkler system in, I, it puts me, you know, when you're working with small margins on doing apartments anyway, that's kind of what happens. And so what I'm asking for is a variance there, so we can go ahead and get this continued, which I know apartments are much needed in Garden City, and so I'm kind of asking for a variance there. So, and, you know, the owner of the project is willing to find, sign a waiver of liability to Garden City for anything that would happen in the instance because of the shortfall of sprinklers. I mean, I don't know if you know on sprinklers, but sprinklers are activated individually, and I can, I can tell you as an apartment owner myself, there's a lot of malicious deeds that happen in apartments, and I can see this becoming a very big problem, because the number one fires that I have, that I've had in the past, have always been in the kitchen. Always had the deal of grease fires and stuff like that, and water's not, you can't put it out with water. And that's the number one deal I've ever had. But I'm just going to kind of leave it here, I don't know if Caleb wants to say anything about the deal, but, you know, we've been kind of cussing and discussing, but I think we've kind of, you know, this was what we felt like would be the best solution to, to the problem we bring into.
Just as a point, oh, go ahead.
Go ahead.
John, I do have one question for you.
Okay.
This is, if the commission would go down this road, your statement that the owner would indemnify the city really doesn't matter as much as the owner making that statement, so the owner is willing to provide us documentation.
Right. Randy Brazil said he would do the right.
Okay, this, and, okay, well, if Randy drafts it, I would imagine the indemnification would go beyond loss of life, it would include injury related, anything that could be attributable to.
Right. But that's who would write it, it would be Randy Brazil, and he has agreed to sign it, and I've already talked.
I figured that's what you meant in this, but I just wanted to make sure since it was, in your, and it was in your letter, because I think we asked you to provide a letter to get it.
Right, right. Randy said he would, he would write that deal for us, so stuff like that, it pretty would cover the city.
Thanks for, thanks for putting that up.
And just for clarification, that is chapter 903, the decimal point was in the wrong spot on the letter, but that's 903 in regards to the fire code, or the sprinkler requirements for apartments. This has been in place, you know, as far as the code goes, historically has been in place since June 1 of 2006. Every apartment complex that has been built since June 1 of 2006, and the adoption of those codes have required sprinklers. We had this issue, some of you commissioners may recall, in regards to the 704 North Main, the house that was converted into six apartment units, the question of sprinklers requirements came up on that property, and, and it was, and they, sprinklers were installed as required by the code. Ultimately, that's what it comes down to, as far as the staff is here to enforce the building codes that are adopted, which are adopted by Chapter 18. Every homeowner, builder, licensed contractor that signs and fills out a building permit application agrees and affirms their signature on that, that they will build and construct to Chapter 18 of the building code, which references the adoption of the international building codes that we have adopted, which currently, we just, back in February of 2013, we adopted the 2009 international code, which we're currently on, which those codes also require those classifications of our apartment complexes to be sprinkled. And as far as, you know, the questions in regards to fire life safety, I'm going to defer that to the experts at the fire department here that can answer any questions in regards to that, but as far as the code goes, that's been what's required, is a sprinkler system in apartment units, and that's where we stand.
Caleb, on this matter, I think it's worth kind of addressing a series of questions. I'll give them to you all upfront, and you can go through them one at a time. One, the notion of issuing a building permit, and the city's practice to accommodate and work with builders sensitive to their timelines and performance timelines, address that, and when we, when we do issue building permits, still what's required to bring in. Two, the notion that the former building, former building inspector leaving somehow impacted this, and if so, if there was any gray area or area left undetermined, the steps the city took to mitigate the impact to the developer of that. And then finally, the, the estimated cost, that type of thing, maybe that's not our place to comment on, people need to get bids for that, but if you have any indication of what we seem to be sort of fair market value of per-unit residential sprinkler systems in these apartment complexes. So kind of the first one would then, would be the building permit.
Yeah, as far as, very similar to the, you have a project on the, that can send it to the day regarding an apartment complex, very similar. A process is started with the site plan, goes to the site plan process. When we, a project goes through the site plan process, we don't get into the details of the building code at that point, that's, it's a known that those are required to be built to the building code requirements. We've historically worked with every builder, homeowner on their projects, even to the point that probably causes the city more comments about the department and everything else by allowing builders to start without complete sets of plans, without full sets of plans being submitted, which historically has led to most of our headaches as we go through projects, but we do our very best to accommodate builders and let them keep going as much as they possibly can. And this is, this case is no different. We've tried to accommodate the builders as much as we possibly can. When they apply for their permits after the site plan has already been approved, we, they submit a set of plans to us to be reviewed. We currently have those plans reviewed by an outside party that reviews them to the international code, which we have adopted into our Chapter 18 of the building codes, and we get those comments back. However, in projects that start with maybe footings first, and then later on, some middle of plans, you know, that, there's a delay in there that happens while we're waiting for plans to be reviewed. In this case, an omission was made in the fact that stamp plans were not submitted, and it's clear in the building codes that, that stamp plans are required for any commercial, industrial, or multifamily projects, and multifamily projects would be apartments, complexes, anything that doesn't fit in the one, two-family building code. So that's, that's the process that went through with it, as far as it's been historically given, as far as inspectors have given okay's for people to build, whether it's weather-related or other things to help them keep their project going, without a set of plans. However, normally it's known to the builders that they need to submit those stamp plans as soon as possible, and have those plans submitted. In this case, that's here, is it went through those, those processes, and it came down to a, a courtesy call inspection that was done in regards to the firewalls, and that's where, you know, at the time, they were allowed to continue construction without stamp plans. We didn't have plans to review, we didn't have those detailed plans there, so that was gone through, it realized that we don't have those, and that there's, there may be other issues there. We stopped the work, so that met with the builders on this project, agreed that there was errors and omissions made that should have, should have been caught beforehand in this project, because it's better we stop the project now before the builder spends any more expenses than necessary to make sure we get some things corrected. And right now, it's in the framing stage is where it's been, where it's stopped that, so there's ample time that if, well, firewalls need to be corrected, or is fire sprinklers put in, that they can still be put in without any additional cost, as if it were already roughed in or filed. So those are, and that's kind of the situation we're at right now. As far as estimated costs, I think every project's a little bit different. I believe the, I know the six-plex that was done for their fire sprinkler system, I believe it was less than $10,000 for that, and that was retrofitted into a whole single-family home that was converted to a business and back to residential. So, you know, I'd say the builder would have the best estimates on that, as far as getting those quotes from other people to find out what, who needs to do to install that. But we really haven't had that many multifamily structures built, in that effect, and going back through the history of, we, our last multifamily structures between 2000 and 2008, we really haven't had any new multifamily over two-family units built that would require sprinkler systems, or fire suppression.
How about the, oh, the name escapes me, Campus Drive.
On Camp the Ru.
Those are multifamily apartments.
Yeah, those all have firewalls and sprinkler systems. All the apartment buildings that have been built currently have firewalls and sprinkler systems that are required to meet codes.
And I don't know if you hit this, but just to be clear, would we stop the project and ask that before project commence, we have the stamp plans, review the stamp plans, know what they say?
Yep.
The city in recognition of any unclarities or errors and omissions that were made in advance of that, agreed to pay.
For those.
The expenses for the stamp plans.
Correct.
I didn't follow that.
The city pays for the plans.
We paid for their stamp plans, because they had not submitted stamp plans, because of the error in us allowing them to begin construction and continue construction without a set of stamp plans. Ultimately, that would be an error on our fault, even though that's partly what we're trying to do to help people move forward with construction.
And in many communities, you have to have it done before you're ever issued a.
Ever issued a permit.
Permit to start scraping ground. As Caleb mentioned, we try to work and accommodate with builders and developers and those types of things, and, but the farther you go, and then have to correct something, the more expensive it is to correct. If you're allowed to start, there's some understanding that you know what the code is, you know what's required to comply. This particular requirement's been in place nationally, internationally, for eight years.
And another clarification, this is firewalls and sprinkler, or?
It's both.
Both are required.
Both are required.
And we're asking for a waiver from both, or just from?
Just from the sprinkler.
What are the side, the, you know, at some, at some point, the IDC determines where they're going to draw the line. they're going to draw the line. Where does it go from residential to commercial, and where is this project from a number of units standpoint? Like, most of us think sprinkled residential, and do think like a four-story, sixty-unit type deal, but-
Anything larger than a three-plex requires sprinkler system based on the code that's adopted by the city.
John, how many are these?
There's sixteen units.
But per building, or-
No, there's six in one unit and ten in the other. And I did, you know, I did submit a complete set of plans. You know, I had drawn, you know, which, you know, like I said, in the past, doing the firewalls was always considered to get you to a duplex, to keep you in the residential building code. That was a deal that had been, you know, accepted back in the eighties and everything like this. So, you know, this totally caught me by surprise, because that's the way I could proceed with the complete project, you know. And I talked, they drew the firewall, you know, told me what type of firewall they wanted, I do it, I did it exactly the way they described. And I issued them a set of foundation, firewall-
They, they who?
The city. I issued them a complete set of plans showing all this stuff, from, from the foundation up to the elevation. And then, and then it went to their office for the pre-building, and that was in there. But it's like, what we're saying is, you know, it's like, the building inspector at that time, his concept and what Caleb's concept is is different. You know, so that's basically kind of a little bit of what, what's happening, and I got in the middle of it, and I'm kind of hung here to draw that a little bit. But I'm not saying Caleb's wrong, because I think that, you know, he probably is right. But I, you know, and I'm hoping that in the future, you guys might consider doing that again, just because billing affordable apartments for the type of community we have, dollars are very important, you know. And I'd like to get people into newer stuff instead of this old stuff, you know, where we do have, you know, carbon oxide deals and things that are done, firewalls in between each units instead of firewalls in an eight-plex, you know, one, no firewalls at all, you know. You know, I hate to have the old, you know, condemn the new, you know, and that's kind of what's happening.
Just as clarification, before I said I got corrected by that, is there is a difference between firewalls and fire partitions, and I think what would be, if, if you were to move forward with this, is that there would be a separation, that it wouldn't be a firewall or be a fire partition, where it would prevent, you know, utilities and some things that go in between those shared walls, similar to what John said had happened back in the eighties and nineties on, and so under the, when we were under the nineteen ninety-seven uniform building codes. So there's a difference between a fire partition and firewalls as far as those things go as well, so.
What is the difference, and how much time are they required?
I'll defer that to the fire marshal to separate the difference for you.
Firewall is basically a freestanding wall.
Please state your name for the record. I understand. I'm doing my duty here.
Okay, that's fine. There's firewall, fire barrier, fire partitions, they're all a little different. Firewalls are basically a concrete wall that's standalone. If this building here burns, this wall will protect this building. When you build a firewall, you basically separate each building. Each building will be a separate building. And that gets back in where, if you build a firewall between these apartments, I thought was going to be built, each one, each two buildings would be residential. That would get it down the IVC back into the IRC and separate. You see them where they've got the concrete up through the roof? That's a firewall. Fire barriers is basically sheet rock on the sides of each apartment. So that gives-
And provides additional time, is that the-
Basically, it protects, and even if these units were built with fire sprinkler, they still got to have a separation between each dwelling unit. Same way with horizontal. On a two-story, they'd have to have a one-hour rating between the top and the bottom floors. Code is complicated, but if you understand it a little bit, or go through it. But that's the difference between firewalls and fire partitions. And what I'm seeing that Casco was trying to do was fire partitions, separation between units. Any other questions?
One building is fragged, one building's still slabbed, so one building could still do it, have firewalls if necessary.
Yeah, definitely could. The second building could have firewalls, I don't know how much that changes footings and foundations and everything.
Could be possible, John.
Yeah, well, I would like to ask him a question, because the way it was described to me when we were doing our firewalls, is we built two separate walls. We sheet rocked this side of the wall, we sheet rocked this side of the wall. Then I had to stand up another wall, spit this wall and do this wall. And the comment from Dave was, is so I could take a saw, if this unit burnt, I could take a saw and cut that complete unit and demolish this unit, and this unit would still stand. And that was the way the fire deal was described to me. And so that's the way those were designed. So there's four layers of five-eighths sheet rock that says, and in my deal, it shows that as a two-hour common wall, but that, that was what he requested. So I'm, you know, so that's what we were considering as a one-hour, but that's what he requested, and that's how we did it. That's how I drew the plan showing that. So if that's that way. You know, I don't know if he, you know, because there's another deal on there that shows it's a two-by-six wall, where I had sheet rock on one side and then sheet rock on the other. Now, that was just, that was just supposed to be really just a sound barrier wall, we were insulating and stuff like that. Well, you know, to do the firewalls, how we got by on that, we did the two-by-six, and then we'll do the firmer strips on it. You've probably seen that, didn't you? There had to be put-
I don't remember.
Okay, 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 okay. But that was just a deal.
But they described in the code, I guess, is what-
Yes. Yeah, that, that wall that we're-
Which is really what governs this. I mean, granted, human beings can make different interpretations of the code, but-
And he knows what-
David Carter isn't the authority for international building, international building code is the authority.
Right, but that's just saying that's how I was described to do it, and that's the way I drew mine.
By the international building?
I did it by how the inspection department said to do it.
Okay.
That's how I did it.
Prior to submitting-
I submitted, yeah, then I submitted those prints. No, that was-
Prints.
When I submitted the prints to them.
To prepare the prints, and architect.
I drew the prints. I drew all the prints for the first deal, and I submitted all those to them.
Okay.
And the deal said, you know, three sets, and that's what I submitted. That's all I had.
How, I got a question, John.
Okay.
Thing that Caleb described, I really don't, I'm probably going to strip the terminology, so jump in and correct it. The firewall, concrete, as described in the code-
Right.
Is, has concrete, and that's the only? Well, can this be retro, Caleb mentioned that, you know, perhaps one solution, given where we are, where you're at in the project, and where we're at from a policy position, it's going to be sort of a binary, all or nothing decision. But if there is a point of compromise, if those could be firewalls as described by code, are you too far along in the construction process to change that, or you would just prefer not to change it?
It would be hard to change, because there's plumbing and stuff.
Hard, harder, or more hard or less hard than a sprinkler?
I couldn't answer that. I'll bet you it would be very close to both the same way.
Because we've got about a thirty thousand dollar difference, or a twenty thousand dollar difference in what we estimate to be the cost of sprinklers, but until somebody bids that, I'll-
Right, well, I've got a bid for-
Competitive bids for more than one provider?
Just only one, because I, you know, I was doing this off a deal, and I caught this guy in town, you know, and so I caught him. But you got to remember, this firewall, just, it goes up to the roof and goes four foot each side. We have a fire barrier four feet each side of the, of the wall. When I was doing the concrete wall, they said I could do that also. I didn't have to take them protrude that through the roof. The sixteen inches, he says, if I had fire deal going across that, I wouldn't have to. But the cut scenario, getting that up there, cut and tight to where I felt like it was a fire, be sealed fire, I didn't feel, you know, I didn't feel comfortable with that. So that's why I did, you know, a block wall in the one unit over there, and then didn't do it in the other ones, just because of the cost of what that firewall was, that wall that went up there was considerably more than the other firewalls I'd do. So it just isn't a wall, it goes up to the bottom of the wrappers. It goes up to the bottom of the sheeting, and then the sheeting is fire-rated four foot each direction. So that, so, you know, it's not, so you're stopping that fire when it reaches the top of that deal. And it's, you know, it's a one-hour deal on this side, and one-hour deal on this side. And then actually, the way what I'm doing that sheet rock wall, they actually show that in the-
Do you have any idea if this is a, if this is a great design, or a great way to provide fire protection in multifamily units, why he hasn't the international building code type?
It does accept that. It does accept that for a one-hour fire rating.
But still, is that sprinkler system?
Yeah, he's just saying it has to have sprinkler system on top of it, but that-
Well, I don't know what Caleb's saying, and I think the international building code is saying it gives job and responsibility.
Right, they're saying they want both, by now.
The code is?
The code is saying they want both now.
Since two thousand six.
I guess so. But that's not what was presented to me when I was doing the plans.
And we did, we did contact the city of Wichita, the city of Salina, the city of Hutch, the city of Dodge, and the city of Liberal, all of which have, their building inspection department ran the scenario by them of what, making sure we're classifying it the same way they would classify it if it was being built in their jurisdiction and the codes. And all of the jurisdictions agreed with the way we've read the international building codes, and the way it would be required in their jurisdictions as well as ours, so. So though, we did call, because John asked us to call and find out if others have it, if the code is, is what it is across the board.
So, okay, so where it stands with having the one-hour barrier rating on each side, and we had a sprinkler system to it, that'll satisfy the code, is what I'm, is that what I'm getting?
Right, yeah, basically, there is a, when the stamped set of plans were submitted and reviewed, and his initial copies, we sent those off, we have the list of things of all the, all the items that needed to be corrected. And that was a requirement in the international code is, is that it has to have a, the firewalls or the separations between the two and the, and the sprinkler system, both are required in multifamily units, apartment complexes. So that's, that's where we are on it, is ultimately, is, are we going to waive the requirements of the international code on, as far as the sprinklers, and, or do you need more time to look at that, or however you want to proceed with that, because that's-
Is, is there, you know, on the stamped plans, these are just like regular plans on, on how to build a thing, you look at it?
Yeah, whenever they're submitted, these are the plans that we go by when we-
Is there, is there any requirements on who can produce that set of plans?
Yes, they are required to be done by a licensed professional, which would be an architect or engineer.
Okay, or certainly those people in designing those plans would know the requirements and have that responsibility, and would ensure that that was already into the plans before they even got to you. I see that we were being nice people and kind of stamped something that wasn't totally correct, and I'm not sure who drew up the plans for John Chapel. If he drew them up, then I would have thought that if he could draw them up, and being a general contractor, that he would have the knowledge to be able to do that, and know that sprinkler systems would be required, because they've been around for a long time. So we have, we have a dual problem here with a little bit of responsibility, because we're nice guys, and, and him on the other fact of maybe trying to, or either overlooked it, or trying to slide this baby through, I don't know which it might be, but at any rate, we've got a white elephant. You know, if, if we, if we bless this, how do we, my question would be, if we bless this and grant this waiver, how do we stop this from not happening again?
One, one thing that we've, since this, and, you know, we've had several, these issues have come up in the past, have brought them, you know, we've discussed them as staff, and one of the things we're, we're not going to, unless we get the complete set of plans, we can't be the nice guy, you know, we have to-
And I can agree with that, and I can agree with John wanting to get started right off the bat, and I'm sure these contractors get upset because they have to wait, but, you know, you know, it's, it's, you know, proper planning prevents poor performance. And we're right now, we've got poor performance, and we have a white elephant. And if we, if we want to be a nice guy, which we do because we want construction, we're going to have to not do anything until we have everything over decks in order.
And our, our big concern is, is when you look at the things, it costs them, it costs the builder way more money in the long run. What this situation had, we had the plans and reviewed them all up front, got everything up before they start construction, it would have changed the whole outlook, and, you know, John, we've talked about that, we've talked about this with other contractors, when they're coming in drawing, and we can't tell what they are, you know, from what's on a notebook sheet of paper, it's, it makes it difficult for us to accomplish what we're required to do.
See, the owner's going to give us a written something that says that he's not going to hold us reliable, but what about the occupants if this thing burns down the line, and someone gets hurt?
Right.
You know, that's another can of worms.
Jake, do you have any thoughts?
I think if you're going to approve it, you absolutely do it condition upon the fact that the owner signs an indemnity agreement. With respect to your question as to whether or not the occupants would have an action against the city, I think that there's always a possibility that the city could be considered negligent for allowing this type of construction to occur, especially when the international building code specifically requires sprinkler systems, automatic sprinkler systems in this type of development.
Does someone saying they'll indemnify us, waive us from being held to that, being held to that standard that municipalities are held to for their liability and decisions that they make, particularly as a government body? So, yeah, for instance, in, in theory, this could be used for anything. Waive, I'd like for you to waive the building code in general, and I'll indemnify you. Or, you know, or-
Well, I think the other consideration-
Any other, any other code, you know, at some point, that becomes, that sounds silly, right? I mean, you wouldn't, you couldn't just say, well, if you promise we won't get in trouble, we won't hold you accountable to any rules.
Right, and the fact that there is an indemnity agreement in place doesn't, again, eliminate the city from possible negligence. And beyond that, I think you're putting yourself in a position where you could find that the entity, whether it's the owner as an individual, or the LLC, or whatever the entity is, they may have limited resources, and I certainly think a plan to train might look beyond the limited resources of those individuals that go after the city.
By the same token, the possibility could exist that this does achieve some level of fire safety that, that indemnification could be enough.
There's always, I mean, absolutely, it could, in theory.
Does the code, whether it be fire, life safety, building, talking anything about alarms? What if there was a requirement, or-
Residential alarms, basically, the apartment complexes, all they've got to have is smoke alarms in that running-
Automatic, like an automatic system?
Automatic, no.
A condition of this, that they're being installed and maintained at all times, an automatic alarm systems? And if it creates a lot of calls, then the owner will just have to deal with whatever cost that may bring-
That can be added, but it's not required.
Yeah, that's what happens.
I could help, taking an alternative measure to the water-fire suppression?
Well, that's, that's my thought, is some kind of compromise, because I personally can't take on the liability of waiving this cover. I, I see that there's problems on both sides, but, but I think that, I know that fire alarms work in houses. You burn a piece of toast, and here comes a fire- You, you burn a piece of toast and here comes a fire department, you know, they, they do work. And so I wonder if that's a reasonable.
Any idea of what that would run, John? Do you have any idea of a?
Commercial fire alarm.
It's got to be less than $40,000.
I don't know. Yeah, but then there would be the monthly fees. Yeah, the monthly fees.
Well, that, starting over is going to be expensive too. I mean, that's, I don't.
Yeah, I mean, I don't know. You know, I can't, I can't answer that. Like I said, I've got a contract for X amount of dollars. So, you know, there, you know, he's going to, he's going to put demands on me to produce those apartments for that amount of dollars of what I pulled a permit out for. And so there's X amount of dollars there. So anything that comes over and above all that thing, I either got to pay for it or I got to figure out some way to get it back.
I understand that he's got a private agreement with you and that's probably not our business, but I would imagine that that agreement was to produce an apartment complex that complied with all fire life safety codes.
Well, now all's, the agreement deal is to build.
Doesn't have to be a code.
They have, he has the full set of prints that you guys had submitted for the, for the permit. He has that full set, those are documented, they are items.
I think the owner would be particularly interested in an apartment complex that met fire life safety codes.
I was just going to let the board know, cities cannot go below the state fire and life safety building codes. States have set, they set a building codes and the cities cannot go below, but they can go above that. So that's just one comment on that.
Well, I know that we're interested in creating new code. I think we're interested in resolving.
Right, but we still got to meet their level of code on this building.
Sure.
And that is including sprinklers?
If we can come up with a UL listed firewall that meets the code, then I think we could go ahead and make each one of those as duplexes as a separate unit. But it's going to have to be a UL stamped approved drawing of that wall.
I think probably what's on those prints probably is that.
I have not seen those prints, John.
Okay, I mean, you should glance at it and see, I mean, and then.
UL listing, I mean, and then it's got to be built to that design. I mean, if the city's paying for the additions or the security, that's what's required.
Okay, so really on what we're trying to decide is to either waive the, the international code on sprinklers. What, what you were talking about, or John, where are we at with the, the wall? I, I got confused with.
Well, that, that would be the situation though is.
I mean, are we talking a whole set, a difference to than what we're trying to waive here?
Yeah, they're, as, as Dan had said, there's a difference between the partitions, firewalls, there's, there's different ones. Some of them are allowed to have, like your electrical and your plumbing and, and ventilation and others are not. I think the ones that originally were talked about, that John talked about that were done in the eighties, did not include any utility, nothing could be in that wall because that's how fire can travel up through the walls. And so that was a solid brick or concrete wall. That is not what's, what's in these buildings. And so that would have to be retrofitted there. So it is not what it's built to right now.
So we do have a, we do have a, an approved stamped set of plans, correct?
We, we have a stamped set of plans that have been submitted, yes.
But not prior to building?
Right.
Right.
To construct, like I said, one building's framed, the other one's, you know, state of the outside.
Can I make a suggestion, Mayor?
Yes.
Or Vice Mayor, Sussman? I, I'm sensitive to the fact that the builder has a contract. And if there's, if there is a solution that the parties can agree on today, that would be ideal. The, I would be interested in the fire marshal's close review of the plans, perhaps going out on site if there's something on site that will help be clear to it. If, if, if there is a definition of that wall that can be shown to be in compliance, the sounds I've heard, the only, the only wall only solution involves a design that hasn't been, that, that isn't used, that would be cost prohibitive for the developer to give due. And then the alternative to that is also seen as cost prohibitive. And the alternative to that is forget the rules, which the commission isn't interested in. So in the absence of any of those three working, I, you know, I, I think the commission's choices are pretty limited. So if there is a chance that there is a definition with the fire marshal, I'd like for these folks to go, look at those plans now, look at site, and we can revisit this at the end of the meeting?
Well, I guess my question, you know, we're looking at waiving the code for just the sprinklers from just this memo that I've got, right?
Right.
Is that what we're looking at? I, I don't understand where the wall, the whole wall concept has come into the thing. I mean, I guess.
There's two pieces to fire protection in a, in a commercial building that's used for residential purposes. Well, then that's the answer. That's why the wall, that's why the sprinkler is part of it, because that is the second piece to a two-piece puzzle. One's the wall.
And that's all under 903?
903, okay.
If he can enhance the firewall to meet the code, have given a complete fire barrier, then he wants to waive basically on the sprinkler system and, or not have to put it in because now we become a duplex rather than an apartment.
Right, that's correct. That's the way we've always, that's the way we've done it in the past, and that was the pretense that I did all this.
Are these two-story buildings?
One, one has a two-story end of it where two apartments are above another, two apartments on one end, the other is single story.
Can, can we delay this to the end of the meeting and allow them to do that or, or just take no action at this point in time?
You can do either.
You can do either of those things. You can also take, see if there's a motion to approve the letter. You've got a variety of options in front of you. The will of the commission at this point, I think we've, absent the fire marshal giving us an opinion on the wall that is being constructed now or the wall that's shown in the plans and his opinion on it, of it, I think you have all the information and are prepared to make the decision. If you'd like to wait for that last piece of information, I think that could be accomplished by the end of the meeting.
I'd like a better definition. I mean, we've talked about a lot of stuff and I'm just still a little foggy exactly on what's what to be.
Sure.
And I would like to see that laid out a little bit more clear and I would be interested in this firewall protection.
And I agree with that by the next meeting. I could have something black and white to show you on the wall what the difference is. That would help.
I guess what I'd ask is that we maybe had a meeting sooner than normal on this because this has already been held up for quite a while.
Dan, how long do you need to look at a set of plans and look at the wall he's constructing to know whether or not it meets your definition of how you read the code?
Yeah, he's just going to have to look at the plans and see what wall he's got built.
Be tough to get it done correctly, however, so. I don't want to hold the project up either, but I, I just don't, I can't approve it based on what I know right now.
Well, I, I think if, if that answer is not, hey, I read the code different, I think this wall, I mean, if it's something other than that, I think the commission would be hard pressed to make any decision that Casco Homes would see as remotely favorable on a moment's notice. I mean, I just think there are too many unknowns as respect to the exposure to the city, whether Mr. Burgess indemnifies us or not. I think there's, I think there's.
There's a lot of issues here.
There's a lot of issues, but in order to give it, again, I was sensitive to the chance that there's been a lot of delays, not all of them or not even most of them, the responsibility of the city. But we've tried to move this as fast as we could once we got the stamped plans. But knowing that he's got to deliver a product at some point in time, I was hopeful we could maybe at least look at that last, that last avenue.
I think there's still some confusion about what wall is being planned and what is expected. If those are the same or can be brought together, then.
It could probably be moved along administratively depending on what Dan says.
Yeah, I, I would agree because the, the one hour fire rating walls that's there are not the same as what had been discussed earlier, the separation.
Really, only half that firewall's been built. So I mean, if he went over on a job site, he would only see half the firewall because we've got to put sheet rock on the inside of it and then sheet rock over the top of that and then build a wall on the ground, put sheet rock on it and then lift it up. So if you physically go over to the job site, yeah, it doesn't look like I have a firewall up, but that's only half of the wall.
If we have a plan that says that's what's going to happen and that's what happens and that's, it doesn't have to be there today.
Well, I would ask, and I think this is the case with every, but I would ask whatever we do in the way of working on this project, we do with all three of you involved, John, Caleb, Dan, look at everything to go. That way there isn't anything lost in translation if one of you talks to the other. We'll set the, we'll set the item for the next meeting if administratively there's something we find that allows it to work within the code or if John, if there's a slight modification that John's willing to do. I think you've given us ideas between alarms and other things of things to research as Plan Bs and Cs for, for John if he wants to go that route.
I'll agree with him. Expedite that and see if we can't get it.
Is that acceptable, John? Or I think the commission could, you could test the desire of the commission to waive it now.
Kind of nice to maybe have that for everything in the future, or at least have that option for them to vote on for everything in the future. Because, you know, I have a lot of apartments I've been drawing for people and everything's been on this pretense of, of everything being done as a duplex, you know, built to allow the firewalls.
Well, the duplex is a different requirement.
Yeah, but see, that's what these were supposed to be, is there were supposed to be like three duplexes. That sixplex was supposed to be three duplexes. That's the way we've always done that in the past and build firewalls in between and we call it, because it has firewall in there, that works as a duplex and then this works as a duplex and then this one works as a duplex. That's what the whole pretense of how we were doing these drawings and everything was. And what that does is it gets it to where I don't have to have an architect draw it. But I have to, I do have to have an architect do the site plan. He has to, that way he's doing all the drainage and figuring the flows of water and everything that I'm getting in. So that's been the deal in the past, but.
Well, but the code, the code changes over time and everything too. And this, and you're saying duplexes, but this is bigger than a duplex.
Well, that's what I'm saying to you though, is I presented the full set of prints to the inspection department.
Were they stamped architectural print?
I submitted a full set.
But they weren't stamped architectural?
Nor did they tell me they need to be stamped. Just the site plan.
Well, I think the commission's going to table us until the next meeting until we get a little better, clearer idea of, of what's.
If I, if I just, Eric, just one point of clarification is, is the, the point in, in changing an apartment complex to a duplex is, is strictly to avoid requirements that are in the building codes. That's all, that's, every jurisdiction we asked was the same thing that, you know, it's, it's wording, is it an apartment or is it a duplex? It's an apartment complex by our zoning regulations, it's an apartment complex. There's, there's, you know, you can cut it up any way you want it, but it's a, that's what it is. And so I, I really caution, you know, you in, in our research and as we review this that, you know, that you keep that in mind of what the purpose is of the building codes.
I think we're going to table this item until the next meeting until we get a little more information and clarification on, because it's, it just sounds like we need more clarification before we make a decision on this, so.
Well, could you guys start working on this? Working on it now would be great. All right, we'll let the mayor come up to the end and we'll start on item 7A.
One of the commissioners, we'll take a five minute recess and then come back because one of the commissioners needs a.
Well, we can, we don't need a reason. We can just take breaks.
We don't need to take breaks?
No, we don't need a reason.
Take breaks. Take a break.
Take a break.
Let's take a break.
All right. Time break. Take a break.
Time out.
Let's start out.
Okay.
7A.
I was about getting a drink, and I'm like, wait a minute, I gotta talk. Staff has provided the following information for the governing body's review, which is one item, the Public Works Director's Monthly Transit Report. Got any questions on it? Sam can answer those. And I'll have Rochelle come up. If she's, hi Rochelle.
She's getting a drink.
She was able to get her, I'll have Rochelle come up, so I can get a drink.
There you go.
The United States Department of Transportation has released their order, so I'll let Rochelle talk about that.
Every two years, the Department of Transportation, the Central Air Service Department goes through an RQ for air service carriers for small communities like ourselves, and we are on an order with Dodge, Liberal, Great Bend, Hays, and Arden. And so, we go through this process, airlines bid on the service, and then eventually the DOT selects service. This year, we only have one bid, which was from American Eagle, so we'll continue our service, and then through American Airlines for another two years, ending July 31st, 2016. So, we're pretty secured in that bid again. Dodge and Liberal will remain with Great Lakes to Denver. Hays was awarded SkyWest, which is a regional jet to Denver. And then Great Bend's going to have a nine-seat caravan taking them to Wichita, possibly a bigger route to Kansas City. So, it's kind of what the Western Kansas Air Service is going to look like for the next two years. Just a little side note, on the award of these, Great Lakes did decide to eliminate service to Great Bend and Hays. So, right now, they're without service, so until they get their new service providers in, those two airports do not have service. Hopefully, they'll be able to start it very soon.
Do the smaller, do they have to go through security?
It depends. Salina has the C port, which is a nine-seat caravan service, and they do not go through security. I know that TSA and the airport in Great Bend is working through whether or not they're going to be secured or not secured. With Salina going into Hays, or, excuse me, Kansas City, it's kind of, they get dropped off at the FBO, and then they go back through the security, the way the terminal's laid out. And Wichita's probably, could be unsecured as well, but they're still working.
And Hays is regional jet, will they, do they have, or will they be putting in TSA security?
They already have it, yeah, so they'll have TSA.
Any questions?
Thank you.
Thank you, thank you.
Item C is the meetings of note. If you don't have any questions on those, I think we're ready for item 8A, which is the appropriation ordinance. If approved, it would be trip, uh, number 2361-2014A.
I move that we approve appropriation ordinance 2361-2014A.
Second. The movement seconded that we approve the appropriations ordinance 2361-2014A. Any further discussion? All those in favor, signify, say aye. Opposed, same sign. Passed.
Item 9A, which if approved, would be ordinance number?
2642-2014.
Amends accessory uses, temporary uses, and non-conforming uses for the city of Garden City, and particularly amending the R3 districts to allow mother-in-law slash guest houses.
Okay, Caleb.
All right, this, you have the complete staff report in your packet, and this is specific to, in regards to mother-in-law guest houses in the, in the R3 zoning district, allowing them to, to be placed there. They are currently permitted in the R1 and R2 districts. This went before the Planning Commission. Planning Commission recommendation was approval, and I believe you have the minutes from the discussion in regards to that, with all six that were present recommending approval. This basically permits, if you have a single-family home in an R3, which is allowed to use single-family camp in an R3 district, that you could build a, or convert a, a structure into a mother-in-law or guest home, so, as long as it meets requirements of the code.
Just move, Caleb? No.
No.
This would just be a.
Strictly just an amendment.
So, R3 would allow up to four places?
Uh, R3 goes the full diameter.
Oh, okay, they changed that.
Yeah.
All right, entertain motion on this ordinance.
So, the only problem is that somebody's decided that a single-family home shouldn't be built in R3s?
No, initially, as, single-family homes are permitted, but when the, the code was amended, probably five or six years ago, to allow guest or mother-in-law homes as an accessory use to the primary structure of a single-family home, it was, the Planning Commission at the time, the governing body at the time, didn't want to continue, I guess, to allow or encourage single-family homes in, in the R3 districts, because you have those conflicts that come in with whether or not, you know, they get along together, whether by zoning, or by use, or by any other reason that comes up. But the Planning Commission currently recommended going ahead and amending that regulation.
Do you have a request for this?
We have. This initially started with a request of an individual who is requesting on 11th Street to build a new single-family home and build a guest home for a relative.
Well, I, I understand that problems can arise, you know, but if somebody goes and puts a single-family home in an existing R3, then, then, you know, they're getting, they shouldn't go in knowing what they're getting all of, we all know that apparently it doesn't happen. But I would move to approve this, if people want to make use of that particular deal.
Second. Okay, it's been moved and seconded that we approve ordinance 2642-2014, line, detest mother-in-law houses slash guest houses. Any further discussion? All those in favor of that motion, signify, say aye. Opposed, motion carried.
Item 9B, which if approved, would be ordinance number 2643-2014. Is an ordinance approving the rezoning of land from CO, Commercial Office District, to C3, Central Business District, at 515 North 8th Street.
And this is a request for the rezoning of this property, complete staff report in your packet, that this property is currently zoned, commercial office. It's used at, the current use, it's been vacant for a year, has apartments up above, and commercial uses on the ground level. They're, they're requesting to rezone it to the C3 district. It does show in the city's downtown master plan to be rezoned to C3 as a, as a proper use of that. So, there's no conflict with the city's comprehensive plan in that. The Planning Commission recommendation was approval with all seven representatives on the Planning Commission that were present to rezone the property. They're planning on remodeling the facility and the commercial properties in the bottom. They have a representative here, if you have any direct questions for them, but this is the request to rezone from CO to C3 Central Business District.
Any questions?
I move that we approve ordinance number 2643-2014.
I'll second it.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded that we approve ordinance 2643-2014. Any further discussion? All those in favor of that motion, signify, say aye. Opposed, motion carried.
Item C, which if approved, would be ordinance number 2644-2014, amends the fence regulations for the city of Garden City. It removes that fee amount in referring to the building permit and inspection fee schedule for any costs associated with constructing fences. Caleb?
The City Commission amended the building code permit fees. The fences were amended during that time to be based on valuation, and in going through the ordinance, we found that there was a conflict in the current zoning regulations, which actually had a fee number that was based, that was in there, that would be in conflict with the adoption of the regulations that the city just adopted in the fee schedule. This removes it from the zoning regulations and brings it into compliance with the current ordinance that was adopted by the City Commission. And this was, did go before the Planning Commission, and was recommended unanimously of all that were present to amend the regulations.
Okay, any further questions for Caleb?
I make a motion, we approve ordinance number 2644-2014.
I'll second.
It's been moved and seconded that we approve ordinance 2644-2014 in regards to the fence regulation fees. Any further discussion? All those in favor of that motion, signify, say aye. Opposed, motion carried.
Salvador Rojo requests governing body's consideration of a partial vacation of Santa Fe Street, adjacent to his property at 109 South 13th. If the commission is interested in doing so, it would require the approval of ordinance number 2645-2014, which would vacate a portion of Santa Fe Street, lying south of Block 57 on the original plat.
Is that corner of the lot?
Yeah. The structures have been there for quite some time, as I think is evidenced by the fact that when Santa Fe Street was improved, it's actually skewed in the right-of-way rather than be centered as would normally be the case. And cross-hatched area in blue is 20 feet on, on the 13th Street side, and 28.75 on the west side, so it's a trapezoidal shape. But the left end of the hatched area is, is an outbuilding that's entirely in the current right-of-way. A portion of the street, or a portion of the dwelling is actually in the Santa Fe Street right-of-way as well. The GIS parcel lines are a little misleading. There's actually about a two-foot encroachment of the building to the north of this lot into this one, and the Rojos are working with that owner to eat properties over. They've come to an agreement on basically a fence line extending from the corner of the building to the west, so everything's working out. This basically brings their property closer into compliance with codes, and will allow them to make additional improvements to the property.
Is that an alley there behind that? Is it a house or a grove?
There, there might be something coming from the west, that's outside the city limits, that might appear to be an alley right-of-way. There is a fence on the Rojo property that would kind of prolong that, and so it does provide an access, but technically, there is no alley separating those properties.
This property within, be, be.
The vacation request, essentially, it will become part of their lot, and their.
Taxable property.
Taxable, it'll be taxable property, increase their value.
To the west of the city limits is more like a private drive to a private property, so it's like the street ends there?
Yeah. Public street ends there. Whether or not that is actually public right-of-way west of there, I haven't researched, but there, there's basically, I think, a no trespassing sign when you get to the city limits. You can kind of see just about opposite the I and the limits, there's a little shadow, and that's a little no trespassing sign or keep out that is placed there by the owners to the west.
So, by the deed, this is our property, we're vacating that and become the property of Salvador and Alma Rojo. Are we requesting payment for the right-of-way?
No.
On the addition of property to their.
No.
Personal assets? Are we requiring or asking them to make any public improvements?
Not at this stage.
They are, are wishing to add on to their house, and, and their building permit is held up, is being held because of the fact that the house is in the public right-of-way, and they would, this would allow them to proceed with that project, and the shed behind may be still required to be removed as well.
So, are they wanting to build to the south? Or are they, in that vacated area, or are they going?
What they've done is they've actually torn off the back of the house currently. It's torn off when it came to the, the attention that, that's actually right-of-way, the half, a quarter of the house, or four feet of the house is in the public right-of-way. And so, we, they were going through researching, getting a survey done to find out exactly where the property line is, and the survey didn't come back, that's.
Well, you got a 20, isn't there a 25th setback there?
Actually, they're in the process of rezoning it. This will be coming back to you, because this was stopped at the Planning Commission as well, for their rezoning, and so, and it was, there was a proof contingent upon them getting a survey done and getting the property correct, so.
So, the, the Santa Fe's right-of-way is, takes a bigger chunk out of the north side of that intersection as it does the south property owners?
Well, this, the physically improved street, the curb and gutter and the pavement is built on a skew instead of being centered in the middle. Ordinarily, it would be the same distance on both sides of the street, from the back of curb to the property line, but I'm not exactly sure how and why it's built that way, it was their inherited, was.
So, it's really, really, they're really, really old.
Yeah. So, they're wanting, so you said they've got the, they've taken the back end of the house off, and they're wanting to add on to the back?
They wanted to add on to the house, yes.
Okay.
Which you get.
Right, kind of.
Good.
I make a, I make a motion, we approve 2645-2014.
You're second.
Second.
The movement seconded that we approve ordinance 2645-2014. Any further discussion? All those in favor, signify, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
Motion, one down.
Item E, if approved, would be Resolution 2576-2014, removes nuisance conditions from 907 Inge and 209 North 13th.
What's the number?
2576-2014.
This is a resolution. This is a resolution.
That's correct.
I would move to approve Resolution number 2576-2014.
You're second.
I'll second.
The movement seconded that we approve Resolution 2576-2014. All those, any further discussion? All those in favor, signify, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Item F, which if approved, would be Resolution number 2577-2014, removes vehicle nuisances from 304 North 1st Street, 1913 V Street, 1509 St. John Street, and 907 Inge.
Okay, I move that we approve Resolution 2577-2014. Still a second?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded, approve Resolution 2577-2014. Any further discussion? All those in favor, signify, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried.
Did I say 1:30? A minute. Item 11A, Mary Commissioners, the governing bodies asked to consider and approve bids for the restroom remodel project at Garden City Regional Airport. There is a, a request outside of what we would normally do through the consideration and approval of bids, which is why we've pulled this off of the consent agenda. I'm going to ask Airport Director Rochelle Powell to come up and briefly give you an overview of, well, it takes longer than that, actually, an accurate overview of the, of the restroom remodel project, and then, following that, I believe our contracted architect, Stuart Nelson, will be, has a few comments for you as well.
So, to start off this process, we did hire Stuart Nelson to be the architect for the city of Garden City. Basically, the conversion of the restrooms is going to be located in the area that's where the TV is, in the terminal. Right now, there is some storage space behind that area, and some of the area right there that's going to be converted to, to restrooms, men's and a woman's restroom, that are ADA compliant, and that provide additional stalls for our passengers. The other area that's currently part of the restrooms right now will be converted into a small janitor's closet, and then the additional room will be taken up for waiting room, as you can see in the. you can see in the drawing. It kind of changes the layout for the passengers to go into the TSA security room. However, we think this is going to make passengers flow into that area a little bit more efficiently. So that in a nutshell is what the project consists of. It'll be a phase project throughout approximately four phases, just trying to keep the restrooms open, either at the old one or a new one during, through the whole process. So there'll be some kind of temporary closures of areas and limited seating capacity during this project that ultimately will have brand-new restrooms, which I think we all agree that we desperately need. But we went out for bids and received the bids back. The low bid from Lee Construction is to, like, approximately 4%, 4% over the architect's estimate. The city's purchasing policy allows a 2% overage that's acceptable for bid process. However, unfortunately, in this case, the lowest bid was over that 2%, which was 4.4%, which is about roughly just shy of $10,000. So all kind of, unless you have any questions for me, alternative or to Stuart to kind of explain the bid process, and there's a few alternatives that we provided for the city commission to accept the bids with a waiver to the city's purchasing policy is one option. Another option would be to accept the bids at a lower reduced rate that incorporates that 2%, so we would still comply with the city's purchasing policy or reject all the bids and rebid the project. And I believe Stuart's going to kind of provide some background information about what those processes potentially of a rebid would cost the city or how that would work, so.
Stuart Nelson, Mr. Mayor, Commissioners. We did put this out for competitive bids, and we received three bids back, one from the local contractor and two from out of town. As Rochelle mentioned, the bids came in above what we estimated the construction cost to be, and primarily, we thought that was attributed to the multiple phases of the project of having to keep, keep the current restrooms in place, is, you know, especially for the restaurant that they would have facilities to use throughout the construction period. So consequently, what that meant was that trades would have to come back multiple times in order to complete their portion of the project, and so that made it really a little more expensive than what we had anticipated. We tried to, I mean, we could have taken the easy way out and, you know, exaggerated our, what we thought our number would be, but we tried to, whenever we can, try to make as accurate estimate as we possibly can, you know, to reflect the owners. Excuse me? Alternative one is to replace some, some currently outdated automatic openers, motion censored openers at the, at the two vegetable doors.
The front door.
Yeah. If you've experienced those before, they're kind of noisy, and, and we would go back in and actually make those where they're ADA compliant, but yet function in a way that then allows that entry vegetable to work the way it's designed to work and allow one door, one set of doors to close before the other one would automatically open. The motion sensors are, are set up such that actually both sets of doors just automatically open, which sort of defeats the purpose of having to, having a double vegetable entry. So we were going to try to correct that, but we knew we were going to be tight on the money, so we didn't include that in as part of the base bid.
Basically, what we're doing is approving a 4%, 4.4% overage.
Well, that's one of the options. The other option is, is to reject all the bids and try to rebid. I, I have some concerns with that in that, you know, the numbers are out there. The, the low bidder was, I'll say significantly lower than the other two bidders, which concerns me that the other two bidders might not be very receptive to rebid the project, knowing how far away from the bids that they, the low bid that they were.
Too, too respite.
And then, and then the, the low bidder, you know, his number is out there, so, you know, I'm not sure his reaction to having to rebid the project either. We, we've looked at items that we could possibly, you know, take out of the project, and really it's, it's kind of a no-frills remodel. I mean, there isn't, there isn't a lot we could do to, you know, to, to remove portions of the project and still make it function and, and make it feasible in the way it, it's designed to do.
Well, I don't think under the circumstances, the best option is to go with a little overage, and, because I, I agree, I don't think Lee would be real receptive. In fact, he'd probably add money to it.
Well, that's always a possibility. If you put it out for rebid, put the exact same project out, you very well could get a higher number. Mr. Lee knows, you know, how much difference he is from the next little bidders, who are both pretty close together, as you can see from the bid tabulation. I, I just think, you know, it's, it's a project that if you, if you don't accept these bids today, if you have intentions of rebidding it at a future date, it very well could be more expensive, or, you know, we run the risk of not get, not receiving any bids. And so, you know, my recommendation would be to, you know, to.
I will comment that it's, it's the number one item that people complain to me about is the restroom situation. And we've got some 1960 bathrooms that have been, what, painted?
Yes.
One other thing, they currently do not meet ADA requirements, and that's, that's fairly important in a, in a situation like this, and.
Well, this, this will increase, will this increase the size?
It, it does increase the number of fixtures within each restroom by one fixture each. We did make it so that currently there's, there's, there's doors on the current restrooms that, if you get into some of the larger airports, you know, they make it sort of it's a kind of a meandering path that eliminates some sideline issues that, we tried to make it so we didn't have to put doors on it, so it makes it easier to, to maneuver around with luggage and things like that. And so, we had a limited amount of space to work with, obviously, and so we did what we could to try to give a little bit more lobby space because of the, you know, the size of the airport, airplane that's, that's serving Garden City is, is larger than what currently was there, so we tried to increase that. As part of the plan, we are replacing two of the existing furnaces that were in operation since, I think, original equipment. So they were, you know, they were due to, to be replaced also. They would go into the janitor's closet.
Energy efficient.
You'll warranty these for that?
We specify them and we ask for warranties from other people. But I, I think it's a worthwhile project. As, as Mr. Mayor mentioned, it is the first thing that people deplaning see, and sometimes it's their last memory of Garden City, too, so I think it is a very worthwhile project.
We've got 2,000 people going through there just with an eagle a month, so it's real important. What, any other questions, Commissioners?
I make a motion, I approve the requested waiver to the purchasing policy into the law for 4.4% coverage of the architect's estimate, estimate, and accepting the low bid from Lee Construction in the amount of $235,496.
I'll second.
Okay, it's been moved in second, what he said.
Thanks for including both in the motion. That's what we needed.
What?
We needed both of those, and the waiver to the purchasing policy and identification of the overage.
I just didn't want to repeat all that.
Yeah, I understand.
Any, any further discussion?
When are we looking at getting started on this?
We would prefer to, to allow the contractor time to order his materials and make sure that we don't have any item, longer, longer lead time items that might possibly delay the project once it begins construction. So it might be a little while before we issue the notice to proceed, so we aren't caught off guard with waiting on some materials to show up.
How long do you think, just as to how long the project will kind of take?
You know, it normally would take about a month for him to, you know, to mobilize. In this particular case, it might be a couple of months before we are able to really start. I mean, we'd have to talk to the contractor, because he's not done anything so far in anticipation of this going forward, so we would give adequate time for him to, you know, to make sure he gets those materials ordered and, and at least some, some assurance that they're, they'll be here when we're ready to start. So it might be a couple, two or three months before we actually get started on it.
All right. Okay, but anything else? All those in favor of that motion, say five, say aye.
Aye.
Close. Motion carried.
Thank you.
Thank you both.
Where the contract?
Item 11B, the city has received application materials from the Kansas Department of Transportation for the 2016 Clink and 2017 geometric improvement programs. The governing body has asked to consider and select projects.
As, as I normally do, I try to give you a couple of projects to pick from in each category. They are listed in my preference. I'll, I'll just go ahead and say, because you, because sometimes you ask. The Clink application, this will be the last of three pieces of the current five-lane section from Belmont through Anderson. The first two were our, were funded in 2014 and 2015. We just signed the contract for the 15 project, last meeting, I believe. We're going to combine those in, to a single project in 2015. So 2016, this stretch from west of Center Street to west of Belmont is the last of the current five-lane stretch, okay? When that was widened back in 89, we just added six feet on both sides. We've gone in, we've done a lot of joint replacement things, but, and it's just time for the old pavement to, to be replaced. So that's what the three-year Clink project succession is doing. Very briefly, once we finish with Kansas Avenue, I think the next focus would be to drop back down maybe to Fulton from Fleming Street back towards First. It would be another probably three, if not four-year phase project, so we would probably do two projects at once, you know, leapfrogging every other year, so we're not tearing up the next stretch of Fulton every other summer. I joked in the past that I was going to go out and replace the sites at Kansas Avenue with ones that say Kellogg, but that's, that's, part of the reasoning is to leapfrog is because it seems like Kellogg is always under construction somewhere. So that's, that's the Clink project. Geometric improvement, we've applied for the one on Kansas Avenue two years in a row now, both unsuccessful, and part of that is because we've got a, 2014 is finally getting ready to go to bid. It's in for plan approval at KOD right now, and we'll build that this summer. So I, I don't anticipate, don't give us a second large project like a geometric improvement until the currently funded one is at least under construction, if not completed, so our, our chances may improve this year for that. And if that actually comes to fruition and, and that, and this, the recommended Clink project would be approved, then I would look to combine the Clink and the geometric in 2017. Again, do it all in one shot as opposed to 600 feet this year, and then next year we'll go tear it up again and do the next stretch, so. But the stretch from just about Second Street to near Belmont is the last bottleneck from Main Street to the east city limits. That'll be the last four-lane piece left. We're also getting ready, like I said, we're already go-to-bid on the stretch from Main to Third this summer, so we'll take care of that four-lane tight bottleneck. This one is, lanes are wide, so it's not near the claustrophobic feeling as you drive through here. Second project is possibly on Taylor from Five Points North to Olive. Again, we've got a fairly narrow stretch, a four-lane in there that we could widen out, but priority-wise, the Kansas Avenue is our, our primary top project.
Any other questions for Commissioners?
Do we need a bid for each application, or?
You, you can do, you can do a single motion for, for both.
Well, I move that for the 2016 Clink application, we select the Kansas Avenue, and for the 2017 geometric improvement, again, Kansas Avenue.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved in second that we approve Kansas Avenue on both the 2016 Clink and the 2017 geometric. Any further discussion? All those in favor, say five, say aye.
Aye.
Close. Motion carried.
The next item, item 11C, lists projects authorized in either the 2014 budget and/or proposed in the 2014 capital improvement program requiring debt financing. So those are line item projects listed in the 2014 budget, or projects that the governing body in preparation of the 2014 budget listed in the capital improvement plan for this year, which would be debt financed and first payment would be in 2015. Steve Kotzels provided a memo listing the projects for your consideration. Now, I think we, we talk a lot about how do you know when a project's really going to get done? Okay, this is probably the final stage, but this is the next stage. So it hits either the 2014 budget or you identify it for in 2014 to be one of the projects debt financed. So it kind of makes this list. The next is at the point you decide to move forward, mentioning it in your list of the items to be debt financed. And then each project will individually be bid, considered, and you ultimately approve the contract for its execution. So there's several times you vote on a project before it actually happens. So this is another one of those points. These are projects that you've identified either in the 2014 budget or items to be constructed in 2014 but debt financed to first payment due in 2015. I'll let Steve go through each of those.
Okay. Yeah. We, we kind of start this as a lead-in topic to your budget deliberations every year. Try to get ahead of Melinda starting to delude you with spreadsheet after spreadsheet and boring after boring, but until you get to the engineering budget, which is absolutely wonderful. So I provided a lot of things along with this memo. There's a bond his, bond issue history, just so you know what we've done in the last 12, 13 years, and various types of bonds, what kind of projects we've bonded and things like that, just to give you a little background refresher course in what options might be available to you. And then you have the, the current general obligation debt schedule that is in effect for this year, and shows what is coming in the subsequent years. And then we talk about possible projects, and then I give you some scenarios of what that would look like if you bond some, all, or whatever. Again, it's just to start discussions and considerations, no, no real formal decisions are, are needed today. If we don't do anything new debt-wise in 2014, the bond and interest fund would have a reduction of about .376 mils next year, based on the current valuation. So that's kind of our starting point. I, I take that amount and that calculate what size of bond issue that could do without having any impact on the mill. So if we maintain. So if we maintain the current rate, we could add approximately a little over half a million dollars in debt without an impact on taxes. So then that kind of sets what we might be able to do easily. And then we get to the real hard part, where we talk about what we need to do, what we want to do, doesn't fit that because it's almost double, overdouble, if not even higher. So the projects for 2014 that are identified are the 2014 geometric improvement on Kansas Avenue. That's the Main to Third Street project. And this is the city's share. KDOT's got an additional $850,000 going to that project. And then the Kansas Avenue bike and pedestrian pathway from Campus Drive out to Walmart. And again, that's the city's share. KDOT's got, well, that's 20 percent. So KDOT's got about four times that amount going into that project. And then water and sewer projects have been identified by the Public Utilities Department to the tune of about an additional 2.9 million. What we've done is-
When you talk about that appetite for debt around $500,000 in relationship to what's falling off, that can be taken out of that.
Exactly. That's where I was-
Provided the utility can handle it.
Right. Yeah. These would still be issued as a general obligation bond, but you would dedicate revenues from the water and sewer utilities to make that debt service, so that it doesn't impact property taxes. So they're listed here, and we have debt schedule, but it's calculated and accounted for separately as not impacting general property taxes.
What kind of water service facility we talking about for 1.7 million?
Mr. Mayor.
What do we build?
This is, at the retreat, we discussed briefly about possibility of merging the two divisions into one location, so that we can, the benefits of having everybody in one central location. The water division has outgrown their current facility on Ninth Street. We looked at what it would cost to remodel that facility, provide adequate space. One, we don't have the property to go very far there. We start running into other city buildings, and it was going to cost $400,000 to remodel a current building. So we didn't stay with that project very long. We moved over the benefits of merging the two divisions together. The $1.7 million, as I stated in your retreat, is a, probably a placeholder number. We don't have architectural drawings done yet. We didn't want to go to that expense to get that done yet, if you felt it wasn't something we would move forward with. We do have some very rough conceptual plans of, you know, how we would add on to that building, but that's the intent of that.
Thanks for the facility out by the electricals. That would be pushed out.
Yes, it would be, it would actually join. It would be connected to the electric building, whether we just go north and south, you know, just extend that building a little bit more, or we configure it a different way.
And that's all part of what you've already got in your water budget or utility budget?
The funding to pay for the bonds, yes. We would have that covered in revenues under the utility.
Raise the property tax.
Yeah, this wouldn't affect any rates.
Okay.
Any other questions?
So again, that's potential bond issue, but no impact to general property taxes. And then we take a brief look into what we've got potentially in 2015. And again, we've got a couple of KDOT projects, the combined Clink project, and the indoor shooting range project. But we do get into some possible options here in just short. So that's just an idea, looking ahead, what might end up hitting you next year. So options possible for this year would be to bond the Kansas Avenue geometric improvement project at that 864,000 roughly, or 90, excuse me, and then the summer all of the water and sewer projects. We think we'll be in good position at the end of the year with cash carryover to be able to fund with cash the 166,000 match for the bike path. So it's not in what I would recommend today, although I do show you what that extra debt Then also during the retreat, we talked about fire department remodeling and Station Three. That was kind of pushed out from the 2014 to at least maybe start preparing plans for remodeling of the Central Station this year. I have something for you to consider in addition to, or maybe prior to starting plan preparation for remodeling the Central Station, is another facilities study to see whether Central Station is ideally situated, or if Station Three, where we have proposed at Schulman and Jenny Barker, is an ideal spot, or is there some other place in the southeast portion of town with the way things are now developing that makes more sense to build a big station? And this Central would become kind of like a smaller Labrador station for downtown and not the main station. We think for 20,000 or so, we might be able to get a consultant in that would go through all the ISO criteria and help evaluate all of those needs, and then we would have something that, a little more meaty and current, that the governing body could make some decisions on for future fire department facilities, so.
So that's your 214 goal on that?
Yeah.
Is to have some-
That's a suggestion for you guys to consider in addition to what you've already talked about. The 2015 projects, again, we think the cash balance will allow us to be able to fund that 400,000 for the combined Clink projects, and we don't have to bond it. There's some additional discussions going on now about public-private partnerships for shooting range. So hopefully by this time next year, we'll know more about what those needs are. So it's not, you know, a real imminent thing that I'm going to compound it on you next year for $2 million. Probably $6 million.
Steve, the concept for the fire facility, I trust that also has the endorsement of the fire department?
Yes. Yeah. When we order-
And the fire chief.
Yeah. Chief, I visited with chief, he's on board with that. I think it was in '06 we did kind of an in-house analysis of fire department facility locations and came up with the one through Station Three on Schulman and Jenny Barker. And since then, you know, we've had additional ISO classification ratings and surveys and things. So maybe it's time, almost eight years later, to look at that again before taking on a $3 to $4 million expense for a major facility, so.
How much land do we have?
We have four acres.
Four acres. You know, that gives us potential growth out there to somewhere, you know, maybe even the range, or maybe-
Well, and the initial concept for that corner commissioner was the fire station and the location for the training tower.
Mm-hmm.
And, you know-
So the tower's still on.
The tower's been taken care of when we partnered with the college to put it over on the campus, so, yeah.
May not be a bad place for satellite P E out there.
Well, and honestly, that was part of the fore-plan was to have even a satellite city clerk's office for folks on the east side of town to be able to come in and pay utility bills or, you know, change service, things like it. So it was more than just a fire station.
There's a lot of areas you could put out there, great options for the community.
And EMS, was that something considered?
I think in sizing the apparatus bays, it's taking into consideration of maybe housing a unit, but not necessarily-
Not the whole thing.
Not the whole thing.
Right.
They probably still operate from their location in 11th and Berry, but at least having space for an ambulance on the east side of town to help their response.
And that location will allow for good access to bypass?
It does, but part of the reason for doing facility study is that the best location.
Right.
You know, we've got now all the Menards and Schulman Crossing Retail and Old Chicago and the Hotel and the Water Park. So is there a better, ideally suited location, like, say, somewhere east on Fulton, just before you get to the bypass, that you can get many places and have quick access to the bypass, because, you know, occasionally the trains block getting south, so. That's some of the reasoning behind a facility study.
Shooting range is, we're meeting with Sharps, I think around the eighth of April C. They would consider moving their facility down here.
Yeah.
So that might help.
Anything else on? So we've got the CIP projects, but also this year we've got, we need to levy the special assessments for the little streetscape improvement over at Seventh and Long. And that's not, doesn't impact your GO because that does go directly against the benefiting property. But it doesn't impact GO because the city in large paid about two-thirds of the cost, never mind what they said. And then we've got the TIF bonds that you've previously authorized this year, as well as for next, so. And if you want to go through any of the calculations or have questions on any of the other water sewer projects, or the scenarios on future debt service, I'd be happy to.
Okay.
Continue.
So we don't need to make any decisions today?
No, we're rolling on the things we need to keep things going in a timely fashion.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
D.
Item D, the Kansas Municipal Energy Agency has requested appointment of representatives from the city of Garden City to serve on their board of directors and execute certificates in accordance with the agency's bylaws. And I believe Mike's going to go over this procedural matter with you?
Yes, Mr. Mayor and Commissioners. In September of 2011, the commission voted to join the Kansas Municipal Energy Agency. And as a result of that, you have, allow three positions on their board, one voting delegate, an alternative, and then a second alternate person to serve on that board. Last time, myself was appointed as the, the first one, Kent, I'm sorry, Cliff Sonnenberg was appointed as the second, and Kent Fortoff was second, was nominated as the third. If it's okay with you, we're more than happy to continue to serve in that capacity. If, however, if you choose that you want someone else to serve in there, that's certainly fine, too. It's your prerogative to make those changes, but KMA doesn't want some sort of formal action, so they know who's the voting person.
I think if you're pleased with this, the appropriate motion would be to approve the slate as presented.
Make a motion we approved the slate as presented.
Well, seconded. It's been moved and seconded that we approved the slate as presented. Any further discussion? All of you in favor of that motion, signify as I have.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried.
Thank you.
Mayor and Commissioners, item 11E, we spent a goal-setting retreat and a couple of pre-meetings hammering out the strategic objective plan for 2014 and 2015. These are our 12 to 18-month goals that kind of frees staff up to go rerouting energy and effort towards specific items in addition to the services we provide on a daily basis to help advance some strategic issues or projects for the commission. We've tried to give each of the items some action phrase to give the commission and the staff an understanding of what it is on a particular topic you want us to do. In other words, instead of just saying "Central Fire Station remodel," which could mean put it on a future agenda to vote on it, design it, start building it, whatever, to examine the feasibility of the Central Fire Station remodeling. So I think even already we've began rerouting that to potentially examining before we do the Central Fire Station or Fire Station Three, some facility needs. Airport improvements, as you identified during your meeting, although you still wanted to keep it a goal, are already lined out for the next few years, pretty specifically because of our airport improvement plan. So remaining focused on that airport improvement plan is, and keeping you apprised of where we're at on each of those projects and each of those years is important. So as you go down through this, you'll see how we've interpreted your direction on each of those items. We've given some major goal headings where we think they're sort of families and goals. And if you're satisfied with how this reads, what we've liked to do in previous years, although it's certainly not required, is for the commission to consider ratifying the goals as presented. And if that's the desire, the appropriate motion would be to ratify the 2014-15 city commission goals as presented, or to offer an edit.
Any discussion on that?
Well, I think item one about the Central Fire Station as Matt talked about is that we've kind of rerouted this to do possibly an overall study of our needs for citywide. So maybe we need to amend that a little bit.
Yeah, it was first sheet.
Yeah, first one, item.
We could, that could be amended to study future fire facility needs?
Yeah.
All right. So the, if that's, so we'll include that change under an as amended motion down the road?
Would you like to put that in form of motion? Is there any other changes?
Does anybody have anything else? Okay, I move that we approve this City of Garden City 2014-15 strategic objective plan with amending the first item. I don't remember how you-
Study future fire facility needs.
Yes, that.
Is there a second?
No second.
It's been moved and seconded that we approve the 2014-15 city commission goals to strategic objective plan with the amendment of the study future fire station goals?
Needs.
Needs. I knew it was a hard word. Okay, any further discussion? All of you in favor of that motion, signify as I have.
Aye.
Motion carried. I guess we're ready for the consent agenda?
Nothing else been added to the consent agenda, Mayor, so the items would be F1 through 8C.
I move that we approve on the consent agenda, item F1 through-
8C.
8C.
Second. It's been moved and seconded that we approve the 2014-15 city commission goals to strategic It's been moved and seconded that we approved the consent agenda, items F-one to eight C. Any further discussion? In favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Post-approve. All right, Commission reports.
Mr. Dow.
Okay, well, I'd like to congratulate Kathy Sexton, and thank her for all of her years working at the zoo, for our city and its citizens, and all the people who visited, and I think it was a wonderful, I can't think of the right word, but honoring the education wing and her name, it was a very nice tribute to her and well deserved. And I'd also like to thank CASA and Kansas Children's Service League for their efforts in educating the public and, and their efforts to prevent child abuse.
Okay, Commissioner Law.
Yeah, I too, I congratulate Kathy and all the good work she's done over the years, you always hate to see good people leave, but you're glad that they get that opportunity to go and, and do something new, and, and I also see, you know, and it's true, probably all departments, but when you, when you see the rest of the zoo staff, you see that same commitment and pride that you saw in Kathy, you know, so I don't question for a minute, you know, that the zoo will continue to be a top-notch place, because, you know, all the people that came in for the reception, that pride, and, and as you deal with them, you know, and other times, you know, they're passionate about what they do down there, and I wonder if working down there isn't something you, you go do and think it's going to be all right, and you get there and, and you're like, wow, this is amazing, and it's a great facility and, and great things going on down there, congratulations to Kathy. Also, saw yesterday where the governor signed House Bill twenty-five ninety-seven with the tricks of recycling, and so I was gonna, with staff, kind of review that, and then, you know, if need be, report, it may not, it may not require us to do anything differently. Basically, if cities are gonna get into recycling, they have to go through an eighteen-month process to take proposals from people that provide that service and all that, and especially if they want to think about providing it themselves. It had a, an allowance for those cities that were already providing trash services, and that's the part that, that left me wondering a little bit about how that works.
Sure, and we will, we'll investigate that and report back, certainly at the next meeting, if there's something in the meantime that's legislatively sensible.
I don't think it's gonna prevent us from continuing to do what we do, like, you know, I wonder if we have to satisfy this process, you know, to continue doing it.
Yeah, or if it elevated to a curbside program or something, how it might impact this, we'll certainly review that and let you know.
That's all I have.
Commissioner Sexton?
I too want to congratulate Kathy on her years of service and dedication, making the zoo what it is today, and it does show, like Commissioner Law said, from the staff's standpoint. Just want to mention that the spring cleanup is going on, and it looks like it's going pretty good, I see a lot of, a lot of items by the curbside, and then being picked up, so that's always, I mean, that's one of the great things that our community does, to help keep our community looking like it, like it does. I want to kind of report, and the mayor might follow up on this as well, but I was one of the commissioners, commissioners that went to Washington DC to provide support for legislative agenda, what we're looking at for the community, my first time in Washington DC, very interesting experience, the city is a beautiful place to visit, if you've ever been there, the staffers are very knowledgeable, they are really connected to Kansas and understand what's going on in Kansas, but they really don't get a whole lot done there, I, I found out, a lot of fighting amongst the agencies, amongst the representation, but, you know, the, the whole briefing that we had was, well, we're working on it, but we're not gonna get that, anything accomplished this year, and maybe not for the next couple of years, and it's just, I turned to one of the staffers, and I said, well, what do you guys do? She's like, oh, we do a lot of research, and I'm like, oh, that's good, and answer a lot of questions, but it's just, the, what they provided us was not really encouraging, but not really discouraging either, but they do listen, they understand what's going on here in our state, they're very supportive of, of, we went to the essential, I was one of the people who went to the essential air service meeting, and Garden City is, is doing great, the other communities, we have some issues with some of their service that they're being provided, and the Department of Transportation is understandable, and they feel the other communities' pains, but I'm just glad that we have Marigan Eagle, and that we approved that, and the service that we have from here to Dallas is, is a great service that, that is being provided, it's, I mean, we flew on it, we were delayed because of some issues, but they worked with us to get to Washington and back from Washington, and it seemed pretty seamless, you know, they really tried to work with you, so. I also met with the staff for Senator Moran, they're very supportive of the Tiger project, or the Tiger grant to help get Amtrak in our, through our area, but they understand that, you know, the states have to cooperate and work together, and one of the states is, we're having some issues with, one of the states not wanting to cooperate, but they're fully supportive of, of trying to get that service and keep that service going. Other issues, you know, the Affordable Care Act, you know, they talk quite a bit about that, and that's kind of a moving target that always keeps changing for everybody on a daily basis, the budget's kind of a never-ending debate, but, I mean, overall, I mean, they're supportive of Kansas, and they, they want to help Kansas, and they want to help the communities in Kansas, but it's Washington politics, is what I found out, so, and the mayor might elaborate on that, but that's kind of my feeling. At the end of the four-hour briefing, it was pretty much, well, we're doing a lot, but we're not getting anything done, is kind of what I took from it, it was just like, okay, but they're, they're trying to support Kansas and what we do. They did mention about the, which was funny, because we got back, and it was in the, in the paper about the, the wild game, the fishing wildlife, going to-
Lesser prairie chicken.
Lesser prairie chicken on the endangered species list, and actually, somebody from the audience raised their hand, and they, and they said, yeah, and they go, do you know that we hunt that thing? You know, how can it be endangered when we're actually hunting it? And they're like, well, it's just because of, of how the agencies are, are looking at the rules and regulations in the, where they get sued, and then they settle, and so the agency tries to write the rules to help offset that, and the representatives and the senators are putting through legislation to kind of offset that, so it's kind of the agencies fighting the legislators, and the legislators are fighting the agencies, and it's just this back and forth, but overall, it was a good trip, we got, got a lot of good ideas, I mean, impressed too, the staffers and our representatives, and they, they truly care, and they truly want to make Kansas a great place, but they have a lot of issues in Washington, so. If you have any questions on anything else, I'll try to answer them, but just want to give you an update where we were at on that.
Okay, Commissioner Dale?
Okay, I, you know, sometimes we all forget about the work that everybody does, and I'd like to, to thank Matt and his staff for everything that they do to put the, put these commission meetings together by providing us information in advance, it really makes the thing go along smoothly. I'd like to also congratulate Kathy for her thirty years, and wish her well in her retirement, and I'm sure that we'll still see her many times. As far as, I'd like to talk about the cost in just a minute, they, they've got a great mission there, and really something that's very important, and, and going back to my days in the police department of nineteen eighty-five, I investigated a lot of child abuse cases, and they are here, they're still here today, from all the way from infants all the way to young adults, and child abuse can be anything from a physical abuse to, to mental abuse, and it always, it always yanks my heart, and I don't understand why, when I watch the local newses out of Wichita, and you find out some, some boyfriend that was babysitting a young child gets so aggravated, and they beat the kid, and the kid dies, or whatever, and I just can't understand why someone so innocent can be so abused by, by people that are supposed to be mature and adults. On the bright side, I can't hardly wait for Old Chicago to open, I wanted to call up and make a reservation, but I don't have a number yet, so if anybody's got one, let me know.
Kathy, yes, she did a great job, thirty years, and I think the thing that impressed me the most about her is, is she started, you know, at a lower level and worked her way up, and, and I think that all of her peers, you know, appreciate that. I too wanted to say something about the spring cleanup, that's a great program, I, it's just amazing how much stuff we pick up every year, and, and we really need to, and every once in a while, I'll see people just put it out there in between, but, Washington DC, boy, I don't know, can't add much to that. The thing that I think the biggest problem up there is they can't compromise, and we've got some really, and, and we've got a few of them here in Kansas, that they just are goaded, and they will not compromise, and we can't get anything done, I mean, it's just a, I don't know, I'd be frustrated if I was there, but the staff, I know Robert's staff, he's got a great staff, we see him, I've seen him two years in a row, and see a lot of the same people, so he must keep his people around. Hills Camp staff, one guy's in there, he represents every, every issue, there's one guy, and he just stayed there, and he just moved, he wore a lot of hats, but anyway, it's, I think it's, it's good to look these people in the eye and talk to them, and, and give them our, our concerns, and it seemed to me like Senator Roberts was a little more attentive this year than he was in the past year, so it must be election year or something, I don't know, but it is amazing. Other than that, I can't think of anything else, so, anything else? Not, we're adjourned at three twenty-four. Thank you all.